It's 5:30 PM and I will call to order the June 12, 2017, meeting of the MISD Board of Trustees. I'd like to thank everyone for coming. First, agenda item, if you'll please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I can see we're in summer. Hope everyone is enjoying their start of summer. Agenda item number two, presentations, recognitions, award announcements, any of those? All right. Public forum, if we had anyone sign up to address the board this evening. All right. Consent agenda. Those items are as follows. List of bills, which appear on, begin on page six. Financials, which begin on page forty-seven. Budget amendment and transfers, which begin on page sixty. Quarterly investment report, which begin on page sixty-two. Competitive sealed bid for cop your services program, which begins on page sixty-seven. Competitive sealed bid for Medicaid and Char's billing services, which begins on page sixty-nine. Competitive sealed bid for the VOIP Circuit Service, SIP trunk, which begins on page seventy. Next, bid for milk and dairy child nutrition services program on page seventy-one. Next, direct delivery food items, page seventy-two. Grocery child nutrition services program begins on page eighty-one. Texas Computer Cooperative, Region eighteen/Region twenty agreement, begins on page eighty-eight. Personnel appointments begin on page ninety-two. Minutes of our special board meeting on May fourth, 2017, are on page ninety-eight. Minutes of the regular board meeting of May eighth, 2017, are on page ninety-nine. And lastly, minutes of the special board meeting of May thirty, 2017, which are on page one oh three. Do any of those consent agenda items need to be polled for any reason?
Mr. Davis, you're asking about the, as far as our teacher appointments, that's included in there, is that correct? Or am I missing a boat on that one?
Yeah, the personnel appointments on page ninety-two is included as a consent agenda item. It's gonna be for L.
You said it is?
It is. That is a consent item.
Okay, I guess I have some questions, I guess, on, maybe, I don't see Mr. Zachary or Mr., no, Mr. Bailey. I guess the question I have as far as, how many teachers are we short on, on being hired, I guess, that are certified, anyway?
For next school year, what the status is right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Bailey?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members. We can report, and we're excited to report this year, that we're on track for a better year than we have in the past several years. Currently running about eighty, about eighty vacancies right now at this point in time. We're below trend for the past several years with the number of vacancies and number of resignations and retirements, as well as with some of the restructuring, we've been able to fill some of those classrooms. So, we feel like we're in better shape at this point in time. As far as your question regarding certification, we are becoming, this year, a lot more stringent in regard to those that are in an educator preparation program and making sure that with the state changes and the law changes, that we are going to be in compliance this year. So, the state rules have changed as far as their requirements, so we're having to look a lot more closely at each and every recommendation this year.
This next question, and maybe Mr. Schroeder can help, so maybe you can, too, Mr. Bailey, as far as, in the past, if we have hired teachers that weren't certified, is there, are we giving them a timeline? As far as the district, are we just basically going off what the state recommendation as far as uncertified teachers?
Mr. Schroeder, did you wanna? I will say that, as far as our certified teachers are concerned, are you talking about the state timeline? That has changed in regard to testing requirements. In the past, the rule has been, if you're in a program, an education, preparation program, or used to be called an alternative certification program, then you had some time to actually pass the test. Well, the rules have changed and going into effect in September one, on September one, they will have to have already passed those exams. So, there's some changes, and that's why I'm saying we're having to really look very closely at every recommendation to ensure that they are meeting those requirements and that those tests that are required have already been passed before we issue them any type of contract or place them into a position.
Okay.
Any other questions on any of the items that are on the consent agenda?
Rick, I just wanted to point out, I don't need to pull them from the agenda, but on items E, F, and G, the competitive seal bids, I just wanted to note that I did check in on those today, and all three of those reflect reductions from what we've had in this past contract, so I just wanted to let you know that.
That's true, thank you. Any other comments or questions or discussion regarding any of the consent agenda items?
I've got a question about K. So, is this, is this technology or assistance technology that we're getting from Region eighteen and twenty?
This is techno, this is not hardware, this is the software technology, the database that we have for financial and student services, as well as all support.
Is that for, you said for software?
Yes.
And?
The database.
Okay, but, and what database is that, or?
I text.
Is that the students' database, or is that?
It's the student and the financial database. So, it's business, finance, students, position management.
Okay. That, thank you, I think that's all I had with that, with that question right there.
Any other questions about any of the other consent agenda items? All right, hearing no further questions, they'll be deemed approved by consent. All right, now we'll turn to our district reports. The first one begins on page one oh four of our board packet. It's gonna be the annual progress report on the Student Health Advisory Council, otherwise known as SHAC. I think that Mr. Mills or Mrs. Fricker are the presenters, they're co-chairmen. Who's going to do the honors for us today? All right. Ms. Fricker, welcome. Mr. Mills, welcome.
Good morning, all right, good. It's the third time today. I just drove in.
She just drove back from University of Nebraska, so.
Thank y'all for having us here today. We have submitted our report, and I just kinda wanted to go over our recommendations, if that's what you'd like us to highlight today. As far as the mental health programs, it's all going well. We have a suicide prevention program that's in place that's been very beneficial. More than sad program at the eighth grade level has really highlighted students to be aware of their feelings and maybe how to address them. But in light of that, we have four counselors in our district, and one of our counselors is leaving, our head counselor is leaving, and so we're down to three counselors, crisis counselors, for thirty-seven schools. And so, our recommended, recommendation is to add six more counselors and to also replace the one counselor that is leaving. We had a, we have situations on every level, at our elementary, junior high, freshmen, and our high school students. So, we just feel like that that could cover all of our bases and address all issues in our district and help kids be more stable. In addition to the health crisis counselors, we also have nursing needs. We have, at all of our schools, we have several schools that do not have a nurse on campus. And so, we are recommending that we have one full-time nurse at the early college and that we have two float nurses. The floating nurses would provide altering day coverage for Coleman and the MAP campuses and for campuses requiring relief coverage when a substitute is needed. And sometimes it's really hard to find an RN to come and substitute on those days. So, that is the reason for the, for the float nurses. Do y'all have any questions about the nursing?
How healthy is the district?
How healthy is the district? I don't have those stats right here with me, but I will tell you that coming in January, they already had, in January, I remember the statistic, 'cause it kinda blew me away. We already had about a thousand students that had pneumonia and that they were addressing in the schools. A lot of the kids now aren't having health coverage, 'cause their parents can't afford it. And so, the schools are having to address more health issues than before. So, does that help you at all? Y'all have any other nursing questions?
Any questions? Thank you for your recommendations. I will warn you, however, that it will be a challenge budget-wise to try and fill all these recommendations, but we very much appreciate the time and effort that went into the evaluation of these areas upon which these recommendations are made.
And we greatly appreciate that as well. We just kinda wanted to bring it to light, if it was a possibility. We do have, like on our mental health programs, we do have the Educational Foundation grant that is paying for one of our counselors. So, we do try to reach out and find grants and ways to finance these positions. And, the other thing that we wanted to highlight is that our pregnancy numbers have decreased from one hundred and seventy pregnant services that were requested in 2010, 2011, to only forty-two pregnancy services requested as of the time that we wrote this, and the end of April. So, that was a great deal. We've dropped quite a bit. So, that was a good deal.
I had a, I don't know if you're going forward, but the mental health part?
Yes, sir.
Is there any interaction, mental health-wise, that can be provided to teachers? Or is this solely targeted to students?
What we talked about is really targeting our students. That's really where the focus is, is for our kids. I would think to review the wellness policy for the district is probably what would have to be done to know where we're at with, with making sure we have good mental health care, safety nets for our teachers and staff. And that's really outside of our window there. We'd have to get Ron Moss in on that one.
Thank you.
Said you can, you said you can get outside contributions for that, I mean?
Well, right now, we do have the Educational Foundation that is paying for one of our crisis counselors.
Okay.
So, we do, you know, we are actively seeking.
'Cause I like all the recommendations. I, quite frankly, know that we're also budget challenged, so probably can't afford them all, so maybe you can start looking for a way to fund it, it'd be, of all your new recommendations, which would be great.
Absolutely, we can work on that, this coming year.
Great, thank you.
The other thing I did want to say, as far as you were asking about the teachers, is that there is a state requirement that all MISD staff be trained in suicide prevention. So, there is a bit of that that they are, they are exposed to, how to handle that. Maybe not support for themselves, but they're exposed to suicide prevention information. So, I think that's a good deal. And the other thing I wanted to just bring to light that we have been able to implement this year, help get started, was the twenty-four seven dads program. And I'm gonna let Mike.
And that's just reaching out to our parenting fathers. We have a, that's a population we haven't really targeted. And we partnered with First Five in Odessa. They have a program they've been using at Permian High School and Odessa High. We laid the groundwork down last year, and this year it did get started. And we, we were working with students at Coleman, at Midland High, and Lee High School.
And then the last thing I just wanted to highlight, what we spent a good amount of our time this year was the health and safety of off-campus lunches. I was going down the road one day and I, I was on Wadley, and there were Lee High kids going everywhere. And then the next day, I was going down Wall Street, and there were Midland High kids crossing everywhere, and it just scared me. And so, I came and we talked about it, and our food services has done an outstanding job. We've talked about having kiosses for boxed lunches on the high schools. We have also talked about how the students go from having lunch at eleven or twelve to playing sports late into the evenings and that gap of blood sugar dropping and things like that. So, what we've done is we've been able to go onto Lee High School campuses where we started and doing snacks that are provided for the kids as they leave campus to go to their after-school activities, so they have some nutrition there, and I think that that's been an outstanding thing. We've done a lot, even on the elementary levels, we brought in, like, spinach testing days and highly nutritional food testing days, and I think that's gone over very well. So, that's been a really great thing. We can't recommend to close the campuses, 'cause of the complications with that, but we are trying to implement more ways to make staying on campus attractive and having quality food, wraps, sandwiches, things like that, available to the kids, so that they can also stay on campus and get tutoring during lunch.
You know, one of the, one of the feedbacks I've gotten over the year, or this past year, was that students, some of the students that are free and reduced lunch feel like they don't wanna apply for it, because, you know, the stigma associated with it. So, has there been any effort in that side of things to?
Well, I think the effort that we're trying to make it is more attractive to stay on campus. And so, we're trying to, the cafeteria, some of the way, like, Lee High School is designed one way and Midland High School is designed another, the cafeteria isn't in the flow of traffic. At Midland High, at Lee High School, it's more in the flow of traffic. And so, we've talked about just kinda making it a better atmosphere and then having the kiosses, so maybe you don't have to go to the cafeteria if you don't want to go to the cafeteria, and somehow having the pay availability at the kiosses. So, that's how we're trying to help that.
We did do a study with some students. We had child nutrition come on Midland High's campus, and she brought all kinds of different kiosk-type foods. And they, she got a ton of feedback from our child nutrition services. So, their, child nutrition's really working and trying to get more creative to appeal to our students who are on free and reduced, to help them to stick around, get the nutrition they need, so they can perform better in the classroom.
Thank you.
I take it from, from your report that there is a separate document entitled Campus Lunch Safety Report? Is that right?
Was it not attached?
Okay, all right, yeah. I didn't know if.
We'll make sure it did.
Okay, all right.
Yes. And that came, that came out of a subcommittee work that they did this year on the very things we were just talking about.
Okay.
I have a question, not to add to the negativity of six crisis counselors probably isn't gonna happen, but recognizing that reality, do y'all talk about how the crisis counselors can work with the existing counselors and spread that, the knowledge more broadly?
There is a conference that the health, that the health department does, the Crisis Mental Health Committee does. And it's a citywide convention. And so, they tried, you know, they bring in private counselors and centers that, all, all the facilities around our community that can help in crisis times. So, even, like, young life counselors and the church counselor, you know, church ministers. And they do, do a conference to help with mental health, so our community is involved, so we have more than just the three that are certified in mental health crisis.
There's monthly meetings as well, where there's that information being constantly passed on. Ron Moss is doing everything he can to support our campus counselors as well.
Thank y'all.
All right, any other questions?
I've got one more question. On the teen pregnancy, you know, looking at the programs and our list, and is there any, I don't know if they're programs or classes, but, like, It's Your Game, Keep It Real, is there any particular item that, that has shown to be the, the best thing to use in, to reduce this teen pregnancy? I mean, you had to have some success.
So, what, what we have seen is sort of a multi-approach, not just a one approach. Partnership with the Life Center, our partnership with communities and schools, who I do work for, and there's a lot of things we do in our programs to help with that. And then, of course, the curriculum that is at the junior high level, both seventh and eighth grade. So, we are seeing implementation starting at fourth grade and then programs that run all the way up to twelfth grade. But it's taking all of those to get the kinda numbers we see. So, we're kind of, we don't wanna say we figured it out, but we don't wanna stop what we're doing. That's, that's our recommendation as a, as parents. We think that, hey, it's working, let's not play with it.
Each of those programs target different grades, and it's a stair-step approach.
So, the Life Center does fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. It's your game curriculum is seventh and eighth grade, and then the Life Center comes back in. And they're talking about, much of the talk is about how to have appropriate relationships. So, to have some confidence in yourself, to have an appropriate relationship to maybe prevent a pregnancy.
Well, and y'all are probably being kind of modest, because SHAC was partially responsible for getting all these people to come together. How many years ago did, did that start? I've lost track of time.
We started that conversation in twenty-ten, eleven, we did a survey, and then we went to work on trying to come up with a plan, which we then passed on to the superintendent and to, to the school board. And everyone got on board with that plan. So, we're into the end of our fifth year, we're just now ending our fifth year. So, and it's really hard to, data has to kinda be around for a while to see if it's actually working, but when we hit the fifth year and we keep seeing a trending going in the opposite direction, we're displeased. As parents, we're thrilled.
Yeah.
Well, and I tout your smartness, is that a word? Often, because we're one of the, of the few school districts who actually head-on attacked this problem and are doing some things in a variety of ways, and so, congratulations for bringing all that about.
Thank you.
And we do try to go, I went and evaluated some of the classes, and so, we do, as a SHAC committee, go in and try to make sure that, understand what's being presented in the classrooms.
And I don't know what we can do, whether to jump up and celebrate, but it needs to be celebrated. I can assure you of that.
Amen.
So, thank you for that, for all the hard work.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you both for your chairmanship, and thank you for all the members of the committee and all the work that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
All right, next district report is our annual audit plan, status report. That information begins on page one eleven of our board packet.
Good evening. Hey, that first?
Ms. Denton, yes, hi.
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 That first document is the proposed annual audit plan. It's pretty self-explanatory, I don't know if you all have any questions?
Right. Any questions about that proposed plan, audit plan on page one oh eight? I'm sorry, one eleven? Okay. Looks good.
And then that second page is just a status report of all the audits that have been completed, what's in progress, and the trainings that I have completed up to this date.
You've been busy.
Yes.
Any questions about the progress report?
It's a question for Mr. Davis. I know we had talked about it in, in the past, but I know our budget numbers and where we're trying to be in our finances, we had talked about, you know, having her an assistant, I guess, at one point in time, but that's been a while back, but I just wanna know how, as far as tackling the task as you go and trying to meet those deadlines, is that gonna be a problem to try to get all of them closed out?
It, it has been a problem. From the prior audit plan to this plan, I've had to transfer two of the audits. And then, plus things that come up, it's kinda slowed me down, so I haven't been able to tackle as many audits as I like to, especially in the operational audit area. Tackling anything outside of activity funds has definitely been hard to get to, because there's so many changes in principles and issues that come up and that kinda take me away from that. So, I definitely need more time to do the operational audits.
What about the training? Because sometimes when we get copies of the audits, some of the same problems happen repeatedly. So, are you having trouble having, finding the time to do the trainings as well?
I offer, every time I go to an audit, I make sure that they know that I'm available to do any sort of training. Most of the time, they don't request it, and I know all the secretaries are being, being trained when they first start, and the Activity Funds Department takes care of that. So, I, mainly, it's just them not requesting it, unless you would like me to start doing them as a, every year thing.
I think one of the things, and we'll let Mr. Schroeder and, I guess, Mr. Rick, in his time, when he gets here, maybe look at something like that, if, if it's something that's been repeated at campuses, maybe that's a training they need to take on versus of asking if they want the training and then people denying that they need, actually need help when they let.
Just to comment, it needs to be a part of their evaluation, and I told the executive directors.
Okay.
That's what you need to do.
Okay.
We should not have repeat issues.
Correct. That's what I was going with.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, thank you for all you do. All right, district report, five C, board goals, goal one and goal progress measure, one point three. Ms. Frye, or Ms. Cales, excuse me?
Ms. Frye, we'll come in right back up after me.
Okay.
I just wanna let you know that this format that we're gonna present tonight is the ongoing format that we wanna build upon for the board goal presentations that align with AE exhibit. So, just kinda trying to get you used to what we're doing. So, the second slide, what we'll do is we'll have what the exact annual target is, if that is not what we are reporting. So, for this one, it's goal one, which is the percentage of students in grades K two reading honor above grade level on multiple measures will increase from fifty to seventy-five percent by the end of school year 2020, with the graph showing where we are and where we wanna be across multiple years. So, we are happy that Della is gonna come up and provide you some pleasant information.
Good evening, board, and I am thrilled to be first on the list for these reports. The letter sound assessment is a new measure for us this year. Although teachers have been collecting this data at the classroom level, it is our first time to collect it at the district level. So, when we set the district-level targets, they were purely predictive. We predicted a baseline of sixty-five percent and set the goal to incrementally move ten points next year and then five points over the next two years until we reach the goal of eighty-five percent. Keep in mind, pre-K is the first formal school experience for children. So, for most of these kids, it's their first exposure to letters and letter sound instruction, and we are so lucky, we get a new crop of kids each year, so there's no building on previous school experience. So, we're building on what has happened at home and in sometimes, some cases, daycare centers. Uh-oh. Thanks, Mike. All right, the end-of-year assessment was administered in May. I am thrilled to report that eighty-five percent of our students met standard on producing twenty letter sounds. Having such a high percentage of our students meet the target set by our district and by our state standards speaks highly of the work of our teachers and our teaching assistants in the pre-K classrooms this year.
So, so.
Me, now that we need to change? Obviously, we, 'cause we're, this was too easy. This was too easy.
The good news is that we achieved our three-year goal in, in our baseline year, which is a good reflection of all the good teaching that took place. The ramifications of that are obviously, two questions come to mind. One, what should the new goal be? And I guess at a future meeting, perhaps in August, when you have more data, you'll maybe come back and tell us what the new goal should be in light of this new baseline. And then, two, is this, the underlying question for me at least, is whether this is a good goal progress measure to begin with? Should it be something different or something more than this? Mr. Jones?
Well, we like this trend.
Yeah, well.
We feel like at this time that this is a good progress measure.
We feel like at this time that this is a good progress measure. However, we are going to reflect on the number itself. And we expect that this will be one of several goal progress measures that we will have to revisit. And we hope to come back to you in August with recommendations and adjustments.
Because if this, if it truly served its purpose, then this goal progress measure is to be indicative of whether the percentage of students in grades K through 2 reading on or above grade level on multiple measures, including this, will increase from 50% to 75% by the end of 2020, so.
We expect to make adjustments to the language within the GPMs. We acknowledge that we cannot make adjustments to goals. I think you elected to only make adjustments to the goals annually. However, the goal progress measures, we can make adjustments to. So we would like to come back to you at a later date with those recommendations.
Every year should be the time when you look at all your goal progress measures because all the data's in, and that way you can do it at one time.
I don't want, I am happy to see this result, I am. But because it was based on something we predicted rather than an actual result, I would be far more excited and would be jumping up and down if it was actually, we knew we were at 65 and we moved to 20 basis points this year. I'm not saying that there wasn't a lot of good teaching and effort that got us to 85 as a baseline. I'm excited about that. But look forward to the August discussion on digging a little deeper on what this goal progress measure should be and whether we should limit ourselves to 20 or more than that on this going forward.
That will be a good discussion because, remember, we're getting a new crop of students every year. So we're not actually basing it on, this is where they are and where they can grow. We're getting a new batch every year. So it's going to be a good dialogue between the leadership team, and we hope to have a good recommendation for you in August.
Your theme should be raise the bar.
Yes, sir.
So, so previously, I mean, actually, part of the effort, it was just, it was in the metric across the district. And then we obviously came up with this solution of making this metric the goal and bringing all this data together. But I guess what I'm trying to say is that through that effort, we've learned something? Or we didn't know this before? I mean, this was a new, a new thing for us, right?
It was a new thing for us, and we, adult behavior did have to change in order for us to reach this goal. So we don't feel like we lowballed it. We feel like this was due to good effort, hard work on both teachers and students. But we do need to just revisit it, and now that we have this good baseline, determine what adjustments do we need to make as far as the numbers, while also taking into consideration we have a new batch of kids coming in every year.
Right, right, right. We don't want to get the horse in front of the carriage here, but, okay. Well, I'm excited to, I'm excited for the district to see this because, you know, it shows a collaboration from Rod, through the leadership team, all the way down to the student. And so that tells me that we've made a stride in the district with our communication. And so that part excites me to know that, that everybody's, you know, hearing the message and understanding change, so, thank you.
I would suggest one other thing, that you take these students, those who continue in MISD, and you track them looking backwards, I mean forwards, but then look back to see if this made a difference on their performance in reading as we measure their reading skills. And then when we get to grade three, you know, what happens in terms of passing both math and reading at that point in time? So how does it tie into your next goal? So don't just say, these kids are done, they hit it. Let's watch them and see if 85 is good. 85 may not be good. It may be very good. I don't know.
Mr. Jones, we, at one point, you ought to refresh me, we talked about the capacity for pre-K and how we were nearing that capacity. Do, have, I can't remember, did we fill all those seats that we had the capacity to have all the pre-Ks in? Or did we have to turn kids away?
We actually had a waiting list this year because we were, we were set to bring online a few more, two teachers, two or three, three more teachers. But then after the TRE failed, those, we did not increase the budget to bring those additional teachers onboard, so.
Thank you.
Therefore, we had a waiting list.
Any other questions, comments? All right, congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, district report 5D, board campus reports, remaining reports?
I have one. My last visit was to Rusk, and it happened soon after Ms. Goodrum was named the new principal at now Tommy Franks. And I think I reported last time that she already had hired almost all the teachers and all that sort of thing. So we, it was a conversation about both Rusk and her change to a different school. There are 430 students at Rusk. There are a lot of different special programs going on at Rusk because Rusk has 130 ELL students. Interestingly, only 10 of them are Hispanic and the rest are Burmese, and there are several languages, several Burmese languages, so they have a lot of challenges with the ELL students. But some of the good things that are happening is they're partnering with the Chin Church that funds perfect attendance and works with them with that special group of students. She said also that HEB has language classes for the parents, so that is an interesting sidelight. They've had, well, they have a little bit of Title I schools and Title I funds, and they use that small amount of money for a one ELL paraprofessional to help. They've been a PLC for one year. And when I asked a need that they, that Rusk needed, she said that just they need ELL teachers and support to keep the Asians growing.
Thank you. Other campus reports?
I don't have a specific campus report. I determined to drive the district on the last day of school, and I would like to commend our personnel for the smooth closing of school. Without a doubt, the professionals were professional.
Mr. President, I'd like for Leah to give you just an update of the future plans for Tommy Franks Elementary as it opens up this year. She's been working on some things. All right, thank you.
Good evening. And we had a meeting today with Judge Bradford in his office to go over some ideas that we had for the rededication ceremony. And right now, we're looking at August 24 at 9:00 a.m. And it will be at the facility. Right now, it either will be outside, possibility it could be inside. It just depends. And General Franks, we're hoping, can attend. If he cannot, he will send someone hopefully in his place, and we'll send a video. And so if we're working with video, we may need to be inside. But again, it's August 24 at 9:00 a.m. And but they are, we are going to have an exhibit that the library currently has. They have it in storage, but it's a moving, mobile, digital exhibit that they have on General Franks. That exhibit's going to be transported earlier in the week, probably about August 25. And it will be located in the General Franks Library. And it should be there at least a whole semester, maybe longer, just depending on Leslie getting all of the kids through there. And we are also working with General Franks to get some memorabilia. So that way, maybe, just like at Baskin Elementary, there is a bookcase that has a lot of things about Mrs. Baskin that they are going to donate, and so they can have an area of the school that has all of, you know, photos and things like that. And we're also working on getting some proclamations for the ceremony. And one other thing that's come up is, General Franks does a Leadership Institute for Seniors, and it's in Oklahoma. Well, he would like to have a satellite Leadership Institute here in Midland. And so this could be a celebration for the elementary school, but it could lead to more things for Midland. So it could be very exciting.
Good. All right, thank you for all that work. Any other questions or comments about that? All right, next district report is, I guess, an attempt to reach a consensus on our July board meeting. I think the date that's been suggested is July 24. That's a Monday. Is that correct, Ms. Robertson? Y'all would check your calendars and let us know if there's a problem with that date. We'll take your silence as a willingness to, an ability to meet on that date.
Mr. Davis, but y'all carry on. My plan on being back, that's the plan.
You believe that you would be able to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, well, without any other conflicts or comments, then it looks like we're good to go on July 24. All right, great. All right, now we turn to our action items. The first one, 6A, Teacher Evaluation Support System, otherwise known as the TTEST program. Mr. Jones?
Board members, the Teaching and Learning Department recommended in the board adopted TTEST in the summer of 2016 for the 1617 school year. Principals, assistant principals, and the Teaching and Learning Team, we've all had one year to evaluate the new system. So after working through the entire process, the Teaching and Learning Department and campus administrations are requesting and recommending adjusting DNA local to formally appraise non-provationary, with emphasis on non-provationary teachers, less than annually. Let me stress that in a year in which a teacher does not receive a formal appraisal, a teacher shall participate in the following: goal-setting and professional development with their supervisor or their evaluator, unannounced appraisals, as well as instructional focus visits, which are walkthroughs. Please understand that doing this will allow team members to be more comprehensive in their approach and spend more coaching time with teachers that are new to the profession and/or are in need of assistance. So therefore, it is our request and recommendation to melanize the Just DNA Local to formally appraise non-provationary teachers once every two years.
As you know, Mr. Jones, I've been very wary of this recommendation. But as I understand it, I have come to understand, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the problem with this TTEST program? It is a very time-consuming program. And if one were to do it every year, if this policy were not changed, then you would be taking, you'd be spending more time than you needed on our master teachers, and you'd have less time to spend on the teachers who need that further time and effort to make them better teachers.
Correct. Many of our teachers are master teachers and are doing a good job. We would like more flexibility to spend more time with teachers new to the profession and/or teachers that are in need of assistance.
Is this, is the PLC process not already putting some of that, you know, some of that focus on the new teacher type relationship, or?
I'm glad you brought that up. This also allows administrators to spend more time in PLC sessions with teachers. So we call them CFVs, collaborative focus visits, as opposed to IFVs, instructional focus visits. Principals and assistant principals, it would be advantageous for them to spend more time in PLCs while these teachers new to the profession and/or in need of assistance, for them to spend more time with them during the planning process. And this will allow them to do so.
We accept the recommendation from the Teaching and Learning Department.
Second.
I just have one question.
All right, wait, 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 let me get it on the record, then. We'll open up for all questions. A motion by Mr. Murray, second by Mr. Kenny. Mr. Fuller?
Now, when you use the term flexibility, is that synonymous with allowing more time for the new teachers as opposed to putting more time on our master teaching?
Correct. Well, understanding that in those planning sessions, in those professional learning communities, you have master teachers as well as new teachers in the profession. But this frees up assistant principals and principals to get into those planning sessions to be part of the conversation to help with that, that planning process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. All right, action item 6B, public hearing, discussion, and possible approval of the optional flexible school day. That information begins on page 119 of our board packet, and this is for the 201718 school year. Y'all have any questions about this for Ms. Cale?
So is this just an agreement that we've already entered in? I read it, and, I mean, was that, is this in a consensus of agreement of the other documents down here at the bottom?
This is an agreement with the Texas Education Agency that we can receive funding through the optional flexible school day program based upon the requirements that they have and that you approve.
And I guess I will call the public hearing to order at 6:17 p.m. Is there anyone that would like to address us about this, this particular item? Optional flexible school day program for the 20172018 year. This would be our proposed application. This would be our ninth year to do that. All right, I will conclude the hearing at 6:17 p.m.
I move approval.
Motion by Mrs. Nicholson, second by Mr. Fuller. Any other questions or discussion?
It might be a technicality, but should the current superintendent's name be on it or our future superintendent's name is correct?
It's for the 1718 school year, so the future is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, last action item, 6C, well, last action item not arising from closed session. Item 6C, discussion and possible approval of resolution authorizing Paula O'Neal and Carla Martin as an investment officer. That information begins on page 137 of our board packet. Specifically, that is the resolution that would appoint them in those capacities.
I move that we accept the resolution.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Marquez. Any questions or comments about this?
Thanks for our effort.
Yes, thank you both for the, for the work that you're going to do in investing the money as directed by the board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, we will, it is now 6:19 p.m. We'll now go into closed session in accordance with the following government code sections, 551.071 through 74, 551.076, 551.0821 through 084. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.